Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Rosky.
Here.
Mrs. Koski.
Present.
Radke.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
Ms. Yarco.
Present. You council, we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Koski.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Rosky.
I would like to please move Consent Agenda Number Letter F to Consideration 8B, please.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Rosky. Item F from the Consent Agenda will become Consideration 8B. Any other discussion, council? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just two items on my report this evening. First, I'd like to begin with an update on some new customer service access regarding our Priority Waste Disposal Program. So with us this evening is our Assistant City Manager Dale Dwojekowski, who's going to highlight this feature for us.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool, Mayor Taylor, and members of council. As you know, just over a year ago, we went live with Priority Waste. This, early in the summer, we had a little bit of a hiccup with some service issues that we've since worked through with Priority, and service has been excellent. This is yet another piece of the puzzle. We met with Priority's staff. We heard loud and clear from our residents that the whole time was frankly too long when they called Priority Waste. So Priority has been working on this on the back end. It's called Priority 2.0. It's a new web portal to make complaints for trash issues, which is much faster, much more streamlined, and easier for residents to engage with our staff and Priority's staff. So Priority not only gets these complaints, but our DPW does as well. It's as simple as clicking, you go to Priority's website, and once you get to Priority's website, you click on Sterling Heights, and Sterling Heights pops up. You can see there on the screen. It shows the entire city. It shows you what day your trash pickup is. And when you scroll down on that website, you'll see the residential service request form. You click in the very top box about a missed pickup, cart issues, complaint, damage, or anything else. If you want some extra notes in there, feel free. And we ask you, does this involve trash, recycling, compost, or bulk? And then the very final part of this form has your address, phone number, email address. And this is big because by clicking the little boxes there at the bottom, it says, I agree to let Priority contact me back. It allows us to let the resident know exactly how long it's going to be before their issues address. And more importantly, what we find a lot of times in the complaints is the resident put loose bags of trash on the ground. The resident put too much bulk items out. The residents stack garbage on top of their trashcan. So there's a two-way educational piece that we now can send them a text message to let them know what the issue was preventing further issues. So this solves so many problems when people use the portal versus calling in the complaint, or even calling in to DPW, quite frankly, because DPW is going to put it in this portal. So the portal is definitely the way to go. Now, you might ask, what about See Click Fix? You can see here is a couple screenshots from my cell phone today. Just make sure this is all up and running, and it is. See Click Fix there, the shot on the left, you can report abandoned vehicles, city park issues, animal issues. And down at the bottom, you could click on missed trash or priority issues. When you click on that link at the bottom, it'll take you to the second screenshot there, and it says in the box that if you need to report any issues with trash pickup, you click that link. And when you click that link, it'll go right to the web portal, and that'll allow you to enter all the issues with your trash. So See Click Fix now is, it bumps you straight to this, which is great, because then we get the full name, address, phone number, and we can update the resident with the complaint. And I want to put this into context. I think people forget how large Sterling Heights is. Hundred thirty-five thousand people live in this city. Every day, Monday through Friday, we go to eight thousand houses to pick up trash. Eight thousand. And at your house, you may have a refuse can, a recycle can, and even yard waste. So you might have three separate trucks that visit your one house. Times eight thousand houses. That's twenty-four thousand potential pickups every single day. It's really staggering when you think about it, that this all happens pretty seamlessly behind the scenes. So just for the month of August and September, there was a potential for Priority Waste to pick up 1,566 stops worth of traffic. Staggering. And out of the 1,566,000 potential stops, we only had 334 service issues, complaints. And to be quite frank, out of those 334, the majority of them, two-thirds of them, usually involved the resident putting out the wrong items. They didn't set their trash out in time for the pickup. They put loose bags of trash in the ground. So that's a pretty good track record. That's pretty good service in any industry, and it's 9.98% efficiency. So things are good with Priority. And after, like I said, a couple hiccups earlier this summer, we're back on track, and service has been very good. So again, Priority 2.0, the web portal, it's better, faster customer service for our residents. And if you want to, there's a QR code with your phone, and that takes you directly to that portal. And with that, I say thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to thank not only Mr. Dwojekowski, but our Public Works Director, Mike Moore, and certainly Priority Waste for focusing on this new portal. It will streamline things. It will improve customer service, and I think residents will appreciate it. Now, not that garbage isn't exciting, but I'm really excited to talk about this next item on my report. You may recall that the Mayor and City Council approved funding to light the rest of Metro Parkway between Van Dyke and just before Hayes Road down by Freedom Hill. It's the only section of major roadway in our city that is not currently lit. And looking outside tonight, it's only 7:10. It is dark as can be. And many of you know, when you're driving down Van Dyke, or Metro Parkway, and you hit Van Dyke, and you see nothing but darkness, it's obvious that it's a safety concern. We've had numerous accidents in that stretch during nighttime hours. We've had numerous incursions with wildlife, namely deer, and there's other safety concerns as well. That's why all our major roads are lit. But we haven't been able to secure the funding to get this last stretch done. And thankfully, we now have that funding in place. Now, we're moving forward to complete this project. It's going to start very soon. In addition to the new lighting, or lighting period on Metro Parkway in this given stretch, since the median is going to be torn up, and it's going to be quite a tear out, if you will, we will take the opportunity to improve some landscaping at the intersections and try to aesthetically enhance the area as well. So this evening, I'd like to introduce first our Lead Civil Engineer, Scott Sharon, who's been very involved in this project. And he's going to highlight the engineering components of this. And then our Community Relations Director, Melanie Davis, is going to follow up with some of the aesthetic improvements that you're going to see as well.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Mr. Vanderpool, and members of city council. As Mr. Vanderpool stated, today we'll be providing an update on some really exciting improvements to Metropolitan Parkway coming here to the city. These improvements will occur on the stretch of Metropolitan Parkway from Van Dyke Avenue to the eastern city limits. That's the location, the bridge over the Red Run Drain. So first improvement I'd like to mention is the new street lighting that will be located in the median over the three-mile stretch of roadway between Van Dyke Avenue and the easterly city limits. The new light poles and fixtures will match the existing style used along Van Dyke Avenue. This is what's currently shown on the right side of the slide. They will be black in color with energy-efficient LED lighting. These new lights poles will maintain a consistent and attractive streetscape throughout the city and reflect the city's continued commitment to improve roadway visibility, enhancing safety for both motorists and pedestrians. Once completed, Metropolitan Parkway median will be fully illuminated throughout the whole city. Currently, only, most of it is completed, but this will be the last stretch that will be completed. The contract for this project is in place with DT Lighting, and the design is near completion with materials already ordered. The work is anticipated to begin in the near future. Notices for upcoming, for this upcoming work have been provided to all residents along Metropolitan Parkway, communicating the proposed work. Another exciting project along with the lighting is the enhanced median landscaping that will be installed at two prominent locations. The first location is the intersection of Shainer Road and Metropolitan Parkway. Existing intersection is mostly a concrete pad, which is shown there on the upper right. Currently, it's a deteriorated concrete pad on both sides. The proposed concept shown below replaces this concrete with hardy and native greenery and landscaping to this area. The second location for a similar concept that's shown on the bottom, to be completed at Dodge Park Road and Metropolitan Parkway. These intersections serve as a major gateway and high-traffic corridors within the city. Over time, the existing medians have become outdated and offer limited visual appeal. The goal of this project is to transform these areas into a more attractive, environmental-friendly, and sustainable landscape space that reflects the quality and character of Sterling Heights. These improvements, I look for these improvements to take place here upcoming spring. Now, I'd like to introduce our Community Relations Director, Melanie Davis, to talk about the final exciting improvement upcoming on Metropolitan Parkway.
Thank you, Scott. We are very excited about the next installment of our city's public art program, and that is what we are calling some public art display pieces of art themselves that'll be going along Metro Parkway. So one of the reasons why we're so excited about this is because it's really beautiful. It adds some, you know, aesthetic to the corridor, but also because of the functionality. I'm sure in the past, we've all driven down Dodge Park and Utica and seen the banners that we hang, that we use to promote various city signature events and that kind of thing, and, you know, with the ropes and so on. And this is going to be something that can replace those. We do expect to have no less than three of them. One will be at Dodge Park and Utica Road, but at least two, if not three, we're planning to be along the Metropolitan Parkway corridor. We will use these to, like I said, promote upcoming city signature events and initiatives. But when they're not in use for that purpose, the great thing about these pieces of public art is not only the structure itself a piece of art, but we can also use that space to promote local artists. So, you know, we have talked to the Arts Commission about possibly looking at some of the featured artists of the month that we've had in the past, and having them provide pieces of their art that we can then use within this system. So we're really excited about that. We are working with Detroit Design Center to put these together. You may remember that name. They are the makers of many, many signature pieces of structure or sculptures and public art around Metro Detroit, including some, right here in Sterling Heights, they did the seed for us, and they've done some of the memorial sculptures that we have in our public parks as well. And not only do they do a really great job, but the Norden Brothers are also, they have a strong Sterling Heights connection because they were raised here in our community. And they, this piece of public art kind of represents a lot of what you see in our city branding and our logo and other things. You'll see the curves and also the little pieces of glass, those little circles that are green and blue. Those will be circles of green and blue glass to match the city's logo colors. Like I said, we'll have at least three of them. We are still scouting locations for them and where we want them to be along Metropolitan Parkway, but we are keeping in mind that we want to make sure that they are evenly dispersed along that corridor so that they can easily be accessed by members of our community at both ends of Metro Parkway. And that is, that concludes my report. Thank you.
And Mayor and council, we're excited to get this done. This will transform that section of Metro Parkway. You often hear this. I know the community takes pride in it, but our medians throughout this city have become a focal point over the years, making our businesses, highlighting our businesses along these corridors. In the past, when you drove through Sterling Heights, you didn't necessarily know you were in Sterling Heights. You didn't necessarily know when you were transitioning from Warren or communities to the north. You just would drive through our city. But now, when you drive through our city, you can take note. You know you're in Sterling Heights. You see these focal points, and continuing this trend will certainly continue the improvement that we've seen on our medians. And by the way, our businesses are taking interest in these improvements too. AGS, as we all know, just committed $30,000 to enhance the median on eighteen-and-a-half-mile road, and we have our second major corporation that will be announcing soon that will be enhancing another section of median for $30,000 as well. So not only are motorists, residents taking note of our great medians and corridors, but corporations as well. So I thought you'd like to have this update. We look forward to the improvements. And Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool, and Mr. Sharon, Mr. Davis. And we appreciate those updates. That's very exciting. Next up, we have a presentation tonight. This is to adopt a resolution recognizing and congratulating Sustainability Commissioner Nathania Fonseca for being honored with the 2025 International Young Eco Hero Award. We do have a presentation from our Sustainability Planner, Alexis Weinberg. Ms. Weinberg.
Good evening, city council, Mayor Taylor, Mr. Vanderpool, and Mr. Koski. I have the pleasure tonight to present a recommended resolution recognizing Nathania Fonseca for being honored with a 2025 International Young Eco Hero Award. Every year since 2003, Action for Nature, AFN, a U.S.-based nonprofit, has bestowed its international Young Eco Hero Awards on recipients who work to nurture a love and respect for Earth's natural resources and take personal action to protect the environment. Tonight, city council will consider a resolution recognizing and congratulating Nathania for receiving this award. I first met Nathania two years ago as she was looking to get more involved with sustainability at a local level. Upon meeting her, the passion and drive she possesses for the environment was evident. For over a year, Nathania attended Sustainability Commission meetings as a member of the public and ultimately became an ex officio member in June of 2024. Her position on the commission provides an opportunity to incorporate the thoughts and ideas of someone who represents the youth. Ensuring that we have a clean and healthy environment is advantageous to us all. However, this is even more true for our youth, who will inherit the long-term consequences of today's environmental decisions. Nathania's efforts expand far beyond her participation on the Sustainability Commission. As a high school freshman, she launched Planet Forward, a grassroots initiative dedicated to combating climate change through active conservation, remediation, advocacy, and justice. Planet Forward focuses on planting native keystone and photosynthesis-enhanced trees to maximize carbon sequestration. Nathania expanded the footprint of Planet Forward through her partnerships with multiple municipalities. In the city of Warren, Planet Forward helped secure $30,000 in grant funding from the county of Macomb to plant a microforest in the fall of 2025. The microforest will consist of 6,600 native trees, shrubs, and grasses to transform a degraded urban space into a thriving ecosystem. In Clinton Township, Planet Forward is creating a Native American honor garden at the municipal civic center that features native North American plants of cultural and medicinal significance. In her home community of Macomb Township, Nathania designed and planted a pollinator garden and recruited students and volunteers to establish a heritage garden featuring American chestnut trees that represent a rare keystone species. In honoring Nathania's incredible impact, AFN states she is an inspirational figure, showing that young leaders can indeed drive significant tangible change and build stronger, greener communities for generations to come. I know that for me personally, I am continuously impressed by her work ethic and desire to create lasting change, and I greatly appreciate her contributions to further the city's sustainability work. Thank you, and congratulations, Nathania.
Anything else, Ms. Weinberg?
No, other than to offer a photo opportunity after the resolution.
Council, so, well, Nathania is in the, in the audience. Would you like to speak right now before, you know, we generally go to the audience before the council passes its resolution? Would you like to speak? You don't have to.
Okay.
I didn't mean to, like, push you into it if you don't want to.
You have to come up here, though.
Well, we'd love, I will say this. I'd love to hear from you, and love to hear what you have to say.
Right there.
You can stand right at the podium.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Nathania, and I'm a senior at the International Academy of Macomb. And I founded Plant It Forward when I was a freshman because I wanted to spend high school doing something that was really meaningful for my community. And if it weren't for the support and guidance that I received from Alexis and Ryan and from everyone else on the Sustainability Commission, I wouldn't have ever been able to get this far. And I'm really grateful to the adults in my life because they've inspired me so much. And I think that it's really important that we youth have role models like them. So thank you guys so much for recognizing me with this. I'm so honored.
Thank you. Okay, we appreciate it. Nathania, so we're going to vote on it, all right? If, if the council approves this, we're going to come down and take a picture with you. And if the council doesn't, I'm going to take them in the back room and have some stern words for them. So council, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
A resolve to adopt a resolution recognizing and congratulating Sustainability Commissioner Nathania Fonseca for being honored with the 2025 International Young Eco Hero Award.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Yanis.
Yeah, I was quite surprised when the, all this information about Nathania came across my email. I appreciate the gentleman who sent it to me. I had no idea that she was on our Sustainability Commission because it said she was from Macomb Township. And when I found that out, I immediately emailed the city manager and said, you know, we need to honor this, this young lady. She's working on behalf of our Sustainability Commission. But she's working, she's doing more than that. She's working on behalf of the community as a whole and, and moving us forward ecologically. I'm assuming a lot of your, that your peers, the kids your age, are learning from you and helping you. And, you know, in a time, and I was just telling somebody this earlier about the scholarship meeting that we have, you know, it's, it's really easy to look at our world and think that things are not going very well. And you worry about the future, and then you get to meet people like Nathania, and you know that our future is very well, in very good hands and very secure. And I'm just so honored that we can do this for you. And I look forward to hearing more great things about you. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yanis. Counsel, Mr. Radke.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for your passion and your work on behalf of our city. You come highly recommended from Mr. Rinks and the entire Sustainability Commission. I wish we had, we could clone you and have 20 of you to do all this work because it's clear that when I was playing video games in high school, that you're working, and we appreciate that. So thank you for your hard work, and it's a well-deserved honor. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Rosky.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So Nathania, it was lovely to meet you. I was red and saw so much about you, and I was very excited to finally meet this dynamo that's been doing so many good things for this, for many communities. We're very proud that you came to us and as are part of our Sustainability Committee, Commission. But we really are glad, and I'm very glad, to get to know you and to see all the good work that you do. So thank you very much. And thank you to your family. Your mother is here in the audience, and I know that she's very proud. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosky. Counsel, anyone else? Not, I will just say thank you again. This is really an incredible honor that you received, not just from us, but this, this award. It's, it's really remarkable. And I, as I understand, you don't live in Sterling Heights, right?
No, I don't.
You just started showing up to the Sterling Heights Sustainability Commission meetings to see what they were doing.
Yeah.
I take it they don't have one of those in Macomb Township? Is that right?
No, they don't.
Well, hopefully this, you can inspire them to create one, you know? But we really appreciate you being here, and it's great to know that this, this board, and I see members of the board in the audience today that are coming out to honor you as well. You really deserve it, and congratulations. Certainly, you have a bright future ahead of you, and we all, as members of the public, are going to be better off for having you with us. So thank you. So council, no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So council, if you'll join me, we'll shoot a picture.
Nathania, stay here.
Congratulations.
You have commission members?
Her mom's got to get one first.
He can stand anywhere, Marcus.
Squeeze them. Can you squeeze them?
Can you see them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see them.
work in the city of Sterling Heights. It's really inspiring and meaningful. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda with the omission of Item F. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's Consent Agenda other than Item F? Council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Koski.
Moved to approve the Consent Agenda as amended.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is a consideration item. This is to consider approval of collective bargaining agreements and memorandums of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and bargaining units representing general employees for the period of January 1st, 2026 through June 30th, 2030, with a presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just by way of background, since 2024, city council has approved five collective bargaining agreements, known as CBAs, with bargaining units representing our general employees. Each of these CBAs is unprecedented, unprecedented in that the primary focus is to ensure that employee's salary and wage structure places a city in a competitive position, not only for recruitment and attraction of talent, but also retention of existing employees. The city's wage proposal to these five bargaining units, well, I'm going to outline that in just a second. The two that we're going to be talking about this evening, the two collective bargaining agreements include the Michigan Association of Public Employees Professional/Technical Employees Union, better known as MAP Professional Technical, and also the Michigan Association of Police Clerical Employees, known as MAP Police Clerical. The term of the proposed CBAs is four and a half years, from January 1, 2026, to June 30 of 2030. Highlights from the proposed CBAs include as follows. Let me begin with wages. After factoring in the increase in starting wages, increases to the top step, and reducing the number of steps required to reach the top of the wage scale, the new wage scales effective January 1 result in a base wage increase for members in the first year of at least 10% for all job classifications, but it could be higher depending on where employees are at in their steps. For members with less than five years tenure with the city, the wage increase in the first year is more than 10%, largely due And that averages out to be just over 3% over the term, annually over the term of the agreement. Beyond wages, I wanted to highlight the defined contribution increase for members of the two bargaining units participating in the DC Plan, which is a substantial number now knowing that we've eliminated our fixed pension program. There are some still grandfathered in, but many are now completely in the city's defined contribution plan, known in the private sector as a 401K, if you will. So, that will be increasing from 7% of base salary to 10% by the end of the agreement, which is certainly competitive in today's market, especially in the public sector. In addition, the city's annual contribution to the post-employment health plan accounts for, the accounts for the two bargaining units will increase by $500. And all these benefits that I'm mentioning are consistent with the five agreements that you've already approved. The city self-insures for medical coverage for employees, as you well know, which means that the city pays directly for medical-related claims rather than through health insurance premium. This has saved our city and taxpayers millions of dollars over the years. So, self-insuring for a large organization like us makes a lot of sense. Consequently, consequently, with that in mind, a healthier workforce that actively engages in health management through preventative measures translates to not only better health outcomes, but lower overall claims. So, with that in mind, the annual health assessment incentive has been agreed to that provides members of the two groups a financial incentive of $750 for the employee and then $500 for the member's spouse to undergo an annual physical and health risk assessment at the city's onsite healthcare center. Many may not know, but we actually have a healthcare center right here in City Hall in the lower level that handles a lot of the day-to-day health needs of our workforce. So, this incentive with the groups that are already receiving it has proven to be very advantageous to both parties, of course, a win-win situation. All other monetary and insurance benefits remain at the levels provided under the expiring CBAs. I wanted to acknowledge the great work by our bargaining teams, including our HR director, Kate, who is with us this evening, and also Keller Toma. Beth is representing Keller Toma in the back. We appreciate their good work, but also the union board members. And I wanted to especially give a shout out tonight to Robert Surgod, who's the president of the MAP Professional/Technical Union. He's in, in the audience and probably wants to speak. I didn't ask him to speak, but he said he would like to. And he did a great job in a collaborative way, working through this agreement with us. We appreciate his work. So, Mayor, with all this in mind, I respectfully request your approval of the two CBAs before you this evening. And there's also a related MOU concerning the work week that's required for all of our CBAs. So, we're available for any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Surgod.
I also would like to thank Jason Growth and Alexis Weinberg, who are on my negotiating team, and Joe O'Connor. And thank you, Mayor and city council. I came to thank Kate Baldwin and Beth and the city management for our fair negotiations. For those that are unaware, retention and recruitment these past five years with the cost of living and competitive factors, it's been a little bit difficult and it's been rising costs on our members, you know, price of groceries has gone up. But somehow, the staffing levels of our departments have decreased a little bit, which also created a little extra stress, but we still managed to maintain all the expectations of the city through these difficult times. I think the CBA is a fair one and it's going to make life a lot easier for your city employees. For those unaware, this bargaining unit is comprised primarily of your librarians, your Parks and Rec, your IT, community relations, animal control, members of the city management staff, human resources, and important members of the finance team. And then we have members sprinkled throughout the city like Alexis and Ryan, who were here earlier on the Sustainability Award. So, as you can see, these employees are essential to the day-to-day operations of the organization and many of the programs that our public have come to enjoy, whether it's been the great programs at the library, Dodge Park Thursdays, and other Parks and Rec activities, and Community Relations puts on Sterling Fest, and they probably want me to mention the volunteer banquet later this week. These events couldn't happen without this union. And also, the city infrastructure of IT, the finance department, all belong to this union. And we love working for the city and we come to work each day and try to put on the best that we can. So, I can't thank management enough for these negotiations and I appreciate your vote tonight. And I really appreciate the mayor and city council, this mayor, this city council's leadership and direction on this much-needed collective bargaining agreement. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Surgod. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we have two suggested actions. Who'd like to take the first?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sirovsky.
Resolve to approve the collective bargaining agreement and memorandums of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and Michigan Association of Public Employees Professional/Technical Employees Union for the period of January 1, 2026 through June 30, 2030, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement and memorandums on behalf of the city.
Support. Removed and supported, any discussion? Mrs. Sirovsky.
Um, yes, I, I, I'm very happy to, so, thank you, Mayor. So, I'm very happy that we've had a nice, a good agreement. It is extremely important to support your employees. And as somebody who supervises employees and is a director of employees, it is so, they're the essential, that's what holds a company or a city together. And unions are the insurance that most employees need. And I'm so glad that our union was able to provide the employees what they need to be, have a great place to work, safe, in safe conditions, healthy conditions. And so, I, I have nothing but praise for our employees. They do such a wonderful job and I'm very happy to have this go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sirovsky. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Arco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. What I'm most proud about this agreement is the forward-thinking about the annual physicals and the incentives to get those physicals because it does make a difference in the cost of healthcare in the future. So, that's what I think is a really good clause in this, these contracts. So, thank you very much for including those. Nothing further.
Thank you. Do council members and mayors get $750 for getting a physical done?
I'd have to review your CBA.
I'm kidding. Yeah. Never mind.
It would be a no.
Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I, I, I agree with my colleagues up here. I'm very happy to have agreements on these contracts. I had one brief question through the chair to the city manager. I see that these contracts now end reclassification. How will that be handled in the future if someone believes that their duties are not commensurate with their, their job title, I guess? What will we do instead of reclassification?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Mr. Radke, that's an excellent question. How it works right now is employees, if they feel that their position has become out of line with the marketplace, or if they feel that they, they have taken on more duties and they deserve higher pay, they can request a wage reclassification study. And it automatically is studied. In, in the past, we've done that through the MML and other third parties. It's automatic. In other words, directors and managers don't have the opportunity to collaborate with that employee and review, okay, why do you feel your, your duties have changed? Maybe there's something we can do about that. The directors and managers need to know more about the changing conditions, including the market conditions. So, under the new agreements, employees will still be able to request that their position be reviewed, but it's not automatic. They have to work with their respective directors and managers in a more collaborative way to work through it. So, both parties agreed with this. The union boards agreed that this was a, a, more of a best practice under the new CBAs and the old method really just wasn't advantageous for the city nor the respective employees.
Well, thank you for that description. I'm happy to vote in favor of this. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Kowski.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to see this taking place. With the cost of living going up, I'm sure that this was truly needed. So, I'm glad that this is being done. I do have a question. You said that we have, through the chair to city manager, we have done five contracts already. This would be two more. Are there any others that need to be brought up to date with cost of living?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselwoman Kowski, this will conclude the cycle, thankfully.
Very good. Thank you. Good work.
Counsel, anyone else? So, I'm just going to tell a quick story. I was, we were doing a, I don't know, we were shooting a skit for the State of the City this past fall. And Bob and Dan, Mr. Surgod and Mr. Rizik are very instrumental in coming up with the skits and everything. And so, we're shooting this skit at the MJR Theater in Sterling Heights that was at the very end of our, our State of the City address. And I, and Brian Figursky, who's not here anymore, but he was here taking pictures earlier, was playing the janitor for us in this skit. And I had told him, why don't you try this line that I thought was funny? And he was sort of poking fun at me. And to tell you what kind of a union steward Bob Surgod is, he went up to Brian and said, you know, you're still on probation, so you might want to be careful about making a comment like that. So, he's a great representative of your bargaining unit and you're a great city employee and you're, you highlighted all the important work that these folks do, covering many, many different departments. And so, I'm proud to be able to say I work alongside you guys and give you this well-deserved increase in, in your compensation. And thank you guys for, for the work that you do for the city of Sterling Heights. So, that's all I have, counsel, with no further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have one other suggested action. Mrs. Sirovsky. Did you call for it?
No. Oh, I can, yes, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I was thinking we were jumping to eight. I wasn't.
No, no, no. Next, next up is the suggested two.
Okay. So, suggested action number two, resolve to approve the collective bargaining agreement and memorandums of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and the Michigan Association of Public Employees Professional/Technical Employees Union for the period of January 1, 2026 through June 30, 2030, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement and memorandums on behalf of the city. Support.
Removed and supported, any discussion, counsel?
You know, I don't. I have zero questions. I'm very happy to see that this is being approved. I think that, as I said before, unions help ensure that we get good employees and happy employees and safe employees. And, and they're great for all corporations and, and companies and businesses because they keep everybody honest. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Sirovsky. Counsel, with no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is consent item F. And this is to accept a proposal by Playcore Wisconsin Incorporated for an ADA compliant custom Mosasaur. Is that how you pronounce that?
Sure.
Mosasaur playscape with accessories and installation services for the new Red Run Park at a total cost of $349,963. We may or may not have a presentation from our purchasing director, Eric Skirda.
We do.
Mr. Skirda.
So, I don't have any slides tonight, so no presentation, if you will, but I can just give a short background on this particular Mosasaur, Mosasaur play structure for the, the slated new, new park approved through the PPP millage. So, about a month ago, a little over a month ago, Kyle, or sorry, Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Langloy, sent me a text message, actually to me and Assistant City Manager Bradley, about this structure that he wants to get for the park. So, not knowing really what it was, the first two questions that go through my mind are, can we afford it and is the price fair? So, that's when my team goes to work, right? So, we, we quickly started researching how we've purchased park structures in the past. And this particular one fit all of the bill for the competitively let contract that was approved for Game Time. So, Game Time was an approved supplier for these type of structures through the city of Charlotte, North Carolina. They did a competitive RFP back in 2017 and ultimately approved Game Time to be the supplier of these types of structures. So, we have two choices. We can go out for our own RFP to try to figure out how to purchase these are, these types of play structures for ourselves, or use a national recognized cooperative purchasing program to do that. So, this particular one, because Kyle was at the National Parks and Recreation Conference, he saw an opportunity there to get this particular unique structure at a very, very cost advantageous price. So, through the math, Game Time under contract did not have to provide us a discount larger than 6% off of the list price. However, since this was at this national conference, they offered a 40% discount off of the list price for, for this particular play structure. So, with that being said, we found that this to be a very good opportunity to get a truly unique play structure at the new Rotary Park. So, I have all of the numbers in front of me, if you'd like me to go over them, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I also have Mr. Langloy here for any operational questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Skirda. I, I think probably what we'll do is allow counsel to ask questions if they have any questions of you. And if there are any questions from members of the audience, you can jot those down and respond during council deliberations, if that's fair. Sound good?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone in the audience? Oh, Kyle, you want to, you want to add to that?
Hmm.
Sorry, I did it too.
I think, you know, I think Mr. Skirda summed it up, summed it up well. For the, you know, from, from my perspective, you know, we've purchased dozens of playgrounds for city parks across the city and a lot of them look very similar to each other. It's fairly, I'll stop short of saying cookie cutter because that's not the case. I know we went through some painstaking efforts when we purchased 21 of them at the same time through cooperatives back in the day, but they each have some different features. But this is truly a, a unique structure that is very out of the box from what we've had here in Sterling Heights, which I'm proud to say this opportunity came about and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here in front of you today to help bring this across the, the finish line. Things have changed in the play structure world since prior to COVID. Our last play structures were really in 2017 and we've seen a lot change since that time in terms of, of cost. What I'm probably most excited about with this play structure too, not only is it something that we don't have in the city of Sterling Heights, something that really is only found in one, one other municipality in the country, and that's in Texas. So, there's only one like this across the country, which is pretty exciting for us. But this also is our first play structure that will have a synthetic unitary surface for safety surfacing. It's a, it's an artificial turf instead of the wood mulch that we have to replace and that gets kicked out day after day under the playground. But this is truly a unique structure that is very out of the box from what we've had here in Sterling Heights, which I'm proud to say this opportunity came about and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here in front of you today to help bring this across the finish line. Things have changed in the play structure world since prior to COVID. Our last play structures were really in 2017 and we've seen a lot change since that time in terms of cost. What I'm probably most excited about with this play structure too, not only is it something that we don't have in the city of Sterling Heights, something that really is only found in one other municipality in the country, and that's in Texas. So, there's only one like this across the country, which is pretty exciting for us. But this also is our first play structure that will have a synthetic unitary surface for safety surfacing. It's a, it's an artificial turf instead of the wood mulch that we have to replace and that gets kicked out day after day under the playground, slides and swings. This is a unitary surface which really enhances our accessibility and takes us from just a ADA baseline compliant safety surfacing to really universally accessible safety surfacing. This will be the first one of city, on city-owned property that will have that type of surfacing, which is a great enhancement to our park system.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Langloy. Okay, now I'll go to the audiences. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this? Mr. Ochata.
It's great to see you all again. This is the item I was the most excited for in months. I've been watching online for a long time. We all know each other or at least are well acquainted with each other by this point. What you may not know is I'm an uncle. I have a nephew. He is 21 months old right now and I can tell you his favorite thing above everything else is dinosaurs. He sees a dinosaur on TV, he roars at it. He finds a book cover that has a dinosaur on it. Whether it's about dinosaurs or not, he's roaring at it. He wears a shirt, he sees his own reflection in a mirror and he will get into a roaring contest with himself. He loves dinosaurs so much and I empathize with that because when I was, you know, his age, like that's where I was at as a kid. And so, while I'm now 31, going on to 32, and I'm not gonna be on this play structure myself, I'm going, I am, if this is approved tonight, I can tell you, I will be so excited to get to be the cool uncle, getting to take him not to Red Run Park or whichever park this ends up being put in, but I'm taking you to the dinosaur park. We've, and that is something I get to own as an uncle and I am just, you know, so excited for that and I encourage counsel to approve it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? Yes, ma'am.
I came for the sustainability portion but stayed and was pleasantly surprised about this announcement. I live over by Red Run Park and I can't wait for that park to be established. And also because the bonds were being taken out, that it's gonna, you know, the timeline was being pushed forward and that kind of fits my timeline for having children and I can't wait to be able to bring my kids to the Mosasaur Park and see the dinosaurs and climb all over them and just like the previous speaker said, I think that is wonderful. And it also kind of reminds me of Ralph C. Wilson Park that's opening in Detroit. They have large play structure equipment in the shape of animals, like I think one's a bear and one's a beaver, but that's very cool that we're considering a Mosasaur and I really hope that that passes and it helps teach youth about science too. So, I think that's great.
Awesome. Thank you. Anyone else on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion. Mrs. Sarowski, do you want it?
I do. Thank you, since I pulled it. I appreciate that. So, resolved, thank you, Mayor. Resolved to accept the proposal by Playcore Wisconsin Incorporated, DBA Game Time, 150 Playcore Drive, Southeast Fort Payne, Alabama, 35967 for an ADA compliant custom Mosasaur playscape with accessories, installation service and freight at a cumulative cost of $349,963.2 and authorize the city manager to sign the proposal on behalf of the city.
Support. The move and supported? Any discussion? Mrs. Sarowski?
Oh, yeah. Lots of questions. The reason I pulled this is because there was some discussion about it on Facebook that I saw and I thought, you know, that was very, the person that brought it up, which is Mr. Graff, it was very insightful. He proposed, he didn't make a pro or con post specifically, but he proposed what this might be and I thought, you know, this is, these are very good questions and a lot of residents had comments. Some of them are still learning to understand that the PPP money has to go to Red Run Park and this is, this money and that we're spending has to be spent only there, but we are trying to really do something different and I see, I think that I, so that's why I wanted to bring it up. So, I have some questions through the chair to either Mr. Langloy or Mr. Skirda regarding this. So, first question, explain, could you please explain again, this is probably Mr. Skirda's, why we did not go out for competitive bid for this project?
Because history has shown through this existing cooperative contract that's already established with Game Time through the city of Charlotte, North Carolina, competitively let contract, we've already received very advantageous pricing and services in the past. And this particular one far exceeded those discounts that were already outlined within that contract language.
And, thank you. And to, so, this is South Carolina, so people have some questions or I, even I do. So, even though South Carolina has approved this as a competitive bid and approved bid, well, how does that relate to us? Why would we, and so, explain that because that does, that's kind of a hitch for people to understand.
So, when you have a very large municipality like Charlotte, I'm sorry, I misspoke. This is Charlotte, North Carolina.
Okay.
So, I.
I'm repeating what you said, so sorry.
Sorry about that. Charlotte, North Carolina. It's right above this North-South Carolina.
It is, I know. I've been to there.
But anyways, very large market and when they issue RFPs of this nature, they intend to capitalize on the national market. So, when companies come in and they submit their proposals, they understand what's at stake. They know that the economy of scales for how, once, once they are awarded, that they have the opportunity to sell nationally. And these particular structures are the, you know, the national landmark structure for parks. Is that right, Kyle? I mean, we have purchased very many of those. The finished quality of installation, the way that they hold up against the elements is by far highest quality.
And so, since you brought that up, thank you very much, Mr. Skirda. Since you brought up the product, durability, the, the quality of the products, have they, so this is a unique project. This, this Mosasaur is definitely something, is it, for, let me back it up. Is it one of a kind?
So, as Mr. Langloy mentioned, there is only one other structure.
Exactly like it?
That's exactly like it. Maybe a different color scheme, but that's down in Austin, Texas. And we actually, you know, did do some research and some digging on how they installed it and it is still holding up, you know, via Google Maps and other feedback that we've received in a very good way. Additionally, you know, these are not just the plastic structures that we have put up in the past that seem to deteriorate over time. This is, you know, high-quality stainless steel materials, very durable and should give us many, many years of, of good recreation.
And I'm assuming there's a warranty involved?
Yes. There, because we're purchasing it under the provisions of the, of the Omni contract, all of the warranties that are in place within that contract will remain in effect for the duration. There is no.
Duration and what would that length be?
I don't know the exact duration off the top.
But the duration of the contract?
Exactly. And it's all laid out within the contract.
Okay, very good. So, I do think, let me see if that's any of the other questions. This is, what is the size of the, I'm seeing two different dimensions here. 31, 3,500 square feet is what the Mosasaur is going to encompass. Is that correct?
I believe 3,500 square feet is, is the surface area of the installed matting.
Is that what that is? Okay.
Correct. Yeah, that's, if I may, so that is the, all the surround, that's under the structure and surrounding structure. So, with any play structure, you have to have fall zone, safety. So, 3,500 square feet includes the actual structure plus everything around it that is needed by law to provide a safe playing surface.
So, what is the size of the structure? Because I didn't do the math. Do you have that? If you don't, I would.
There is a, an overview included in the supporting documents.
Right. I'm looking at, I believe.
Yeah.
But I don't see dimensions specific to the Mosasaur. Just asking. I know it's big.
Absolutely follow up on exact dimensions or length.
So, and I have a question about the head of the Mosasaur because I do think that this is important, science-based. Is this an accurate depiction of the skull of the Mosasaur? Is it going to be something where we can say, this is what the dinosaur would have looked like?
Yes, it is.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that. So, I, you know, raising my kids here and they, none of the parks, although they were wonderful open green spaces and they did have some amenities, like basketball courts and volley, a little bit of a volleyball court, none of this that we have put through and had opportunities to put through based on what the voters voted for existed when my kids were little. And they're adults now. They're younger, they're older than Ben, Mr. Ochata over there. And I really wish that I could have had something like this for my kids. My grandchild now lives and she's in Virginia and she's almost 10, so I'm kind of looking for more grandchildren. But we need, this, I think, is something that is distinctive. We want to try to, you know, Sterling Heights, we don't want to just be the cookie cutter community. We don't want to have just, if we can, have something a little different, a little nicer, a little bit more unique at a very good price. I think this is wonderful. I am exceptionally excited about the ADA compliant unified service for, basically for, it's not just because they're not gonna kick wood chips out of the way and trip, they're gonna, anyone who has an ADA, a disability, a mobility concern, they can roll their wheelchairs, they can roll their walkers, they can use the surface, the surface is stable for them to still get up to the playing area, to enjoy it, to see it, to look at it. And even, even adults, you know, I have grandpa or grandma or Mrs. Sarowski, who will be using a cane or something and you just don't know what surface you need to provide. This is the safest one instead of trying to make sure that it's any better. I'm happy for that. I do think it's a fair price. I do know that it's going to be a little bit higher than your average, you know, swing set and what we provide. But I will say this, when my kids' school way back in the day put in a wood-constructed castle, basically, at St. Lawrence, it was $100,000 even back then and that was 20 years ago, more than that, 30 years ago. So, I think that this is reasonable and I'm, I'm very happy to have it. I think it's very cool and thank you, Kyle, and everyone, Mr. Skirda, for helping bring this to the city. I think it's going to be beautiful. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, I'm very excited for this project. I'm very excited about the discount that our recreation director seems to have finagled out of the representatives at the conference. Let me ask you through the chair to Kyle, did you buttonhole them? How did you, how'd you get them to go down to 40% off for the existing structure? I'm just curious.
You know, when, when you go to a conference like the National Recreation and Park Association, it is a truly fascinating conference and trade show to be in, something I've never, never seen the like of before. It's a massive trade show and the vendors know that they're, they're there to do business. And some vendors put up play structures that you can't purchase because they're not real structures. They're showcasing something that, different parts that they, I don't want to say cobble together, but they put together just to show opportunities. Finding something like this where they actually had, it's like buying a model that's on the, you know, a couch from, I was gonna say Art Van, that tells you how old I am, you know, Gardner White or whatever, right? They, they don't want to take it back. You know, they, they want to find a home for it. It's a showpiece for them because there is not one in the state of Michigan. So, when our local representative gets to say, look at this great piece that's unique, custom designed, though this is the kind of stuff that we can do for you, we are now a talking point for our profession, not just in Sterling Heights, Macomb County, the state of Michigan, the region. We are now a talking point and a destination for many to see. And that's how you get it down to the price. There's a mutually beneficial, ultimately, arrangement and we're able to take advantage of that, which I'm excited for.
Well, it's very exciting. I think it's gonna be a showpiece for our county. I think we already have the best park system in Macomb County and arguably one in the state and I think this will just propel us to another level. I think kids are gonna love it. I know I enjoyed dinosaurs when I was a kid and I think being able to crawl on one and climb on one and play on one will really accentuate that. The discount is very nice because it seems like the right price. Normally, you know, I agree with my colleagues here that I would say we should RFP, we should bid, but when you see 40% off, when we've already been buying Omni play products, not a Mosasaur, I'm saying that right, but we've been buying their products already and we know how much they cost and nationally, this is such a great deal for us. I think it's gonna be a statement piece for the county. It makes me, excuse me, I have a cough. It makes me very excited for Red Run Park. The one comment I would make on Red Run Park, I read the description in our packet, don't forget the basketball court. That's, that's one of the things that people who live in this area have told me repeatedly what they want in the park. I saw pickleball. Pickleball's great. I see this, this is gonna be awesome, but knocking on doors in that area and I knocked on Ms. Fisher's door, I knocked on a lot of doors in that area, I would say that they talked about having a place to play pickup basketball, you know, a lot of kids in that area who don't have a park locally. So, let's make this a park for the entire city, but also for the people in the neighborhood. One of the reasons we're putting in Red Run Park is that there are no parks traditionally in the southern part of the city. These kids, the closest one would be Moravian Park to them. That's quite a bit of ways, you have to cross several major streets. So, this will be an amenity for the entire south side, especially if we connect the ITC trail to it, which we intend to do. It'll become much like Ms. Fisher said, much like Ralph C. Wilson and Centennial Park or some of the parks in Detroit that are more of a draw. I think that this park could be a draw for us. And so, I'm happy to support this. I commend you for the discount. I think it's gonna be awesome and I'm so excited that we are bringing the projects that we promised in the Pathway to Play and Preservation Millage to fruition so quickly. So, I'm proud to support this. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Langless. So, we've used Game Time when we were doing recreating recreation. About how many playscapes have we purchased from them?
I believe, including the two, one at Beaver Creek and the original, when I say original, the newer one that we put into Dodge Park prior to going through recreating recreation, I believe we now have 10 Game Time units in Sterling Heights, 10 or 11. We have, certainly have had success with other entities as well. Game Time is a leader in the industry, all commercially rated and a great company to work with when it comes to installing and maintaining.
Which leads me to think that that may be a possibility on why, what led to part of the 40% discount as well as we are a very good established customer. I will say that we've been to MML conferences before and they have been there with their displays and trust me, they know Sterling Heights and they appreciate Sterling Heights. So, I think, you know, a 40% discount, you know, we've given them a lot of business and now they're giving it back and I appreciate, that's, that's a great opportunity for the city. So, thank you. I'm wondering about the safety surface. So, I would imagine at some point that will have to be replaced. How often do they anticipate that be replaced?
Great question. So, the safety servicing normally comes with about a 10-year warranty in itself. So, if you kind of work forward from a 10-year warranty, you're about 15, 15 to 20 years is what we expect to get out of that safety servicing, provided there's no damage, but just normal wear and tear. That can accelerate, that can decelerate based on, on use, of course, but it's, when it comes to mulch, you know, choosing an engineered wood fiber or choosing a unitary surface like this, either pay it upfront for a surface like this or you end up paying it over the course of time, you know, and probably not even accounting for the maintenance that goes into constantly keeping it refreshed and raked in. So, it's a great surfacing, not only for the accessibility piece. I've also looked at a number of different surfaces. There's a lot of different unitary surfaces, whether it's tiles or the poured-in-place rubber, a lot of downfalls. This is the one that I finally feel comfortable going with based on how I believe it'll wear over time and how it can be repaired if in fact there is something that comes about.
And it would be hard to even estimate what a replacement would be because it's so far down the road, you know, past the warranty. So, it's warranted for 10 years.
Correct.
So, it would, it would be hard to anticipate how much replacement will be beyond that. So, I won't even ask you that question.
Thank you.
But I'm really excited. I think it is very cool. I think that this park is gonna end up being something much larger than any of us anticipated and much better. I think, you know, there's a lot of families that live in that area and.
I think, you know, there's a lot of families that live in that area, um, and it has great access and I'm excited, I'm excited to support this and, um, thank you for all of your hard work, both of you, um, on this project because, um, I, the residents are going to be very excited to have it come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt, Mrs. Koski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Mr. Langless. When do you think that the new Red Run Park will be ready for delivery of the Montesaurus? What location will the residents be able to find it in?
Mr. Langless?
Yeah, um, we are really at the finish line of the design for Red Run Park. Um, of course, we are going to purchase this, uh, play structure now. We're going to take, uh, delivery of play structure and it's going to, uh, remain in our possession until it's ready to be installed, um, by the company, which will be one of the last things that gets done as part of the project. So, um, we don't expect that the park itself will be opened until, uh, about this time next year, um, maybe a touch later, but, uh, uh, in the fall of 2026, once it's all said and done, so...
Do you have any projected idea where it will be located in the park?
I'm sorry, where, uh, yeah, where it will be located in the park. So the, the way that Red Run Park is, um, the, the topography of Red Run Park is there's a lot of flood plain and floodway.
Yeah.
Um, and so as you come into the park, the designs are showing, uh, that we kind of have a central hub. A lot of the activities are clustered close to the front of the park, um, near parking. Um, it'll be in an area where there's restrooms, it'll be in an area where there's other seating nooks for families to sit and read and enjoy their time. Uh, it's close to, uh, not too far from the dog park, it's right off the trail, so it's right kind of in the central hub of activity. And then as you get further into the park, closer to the drain, that's where we have mostly, uh, trail, uh, the non-motorized trail, so...
But it'll be nice and high and dry, so we won't have to worry about any flooding in there?
Uh, hopefully.
Okay, I won't hold you to that.
If we get flooding there, we got, uh, we're gonna have, we have problems, uh, beyond a flooded playground. But the nice part about, again, looking at that surfacing that we have is that's not going to wash away if we do have, uh, flooding, whereas in the past, uh, whether it was North Clinton River Park or even the lower level of Dodge Park, we could not, safety surfacing in those areas because it washed away every time it flooded. But, um, a lot of protections going into the design of the park in general to, um, mitigate any potential water making it to that spot.
Well, it sounds like it's going to be a beautiful park and, uh, no playing on it until it goes into the park, okay?
That's right, it'll be in a box.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Koski, Mrs. Arco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Um, I'm not going to repeat what everybody said, I'm really looking forward to this. Um, and we've clarified that it's going into Red Run Park, not Rotary Park, okay? And my other thought is because this created so much discussion on Facebook, somehow we need to let the residents know that we have expenditures like that, that this is to fulfill voter-approved funding through PPP millage, that this is not, because they, "Why can't you use it for this and why can't you use it for that?" Because that's not what that money is supposed to be used for. So somehow we have to do a better, um, way of educating, um, the residents on why and how this money is being spent. So, nothing further.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Arco, anyone else? Um, I think we do just, I think we do a perfectly good job explaining what we do. There's incredibly detailed information in the backup material and there are people on Facebook who have silly opinions and they always will have silly opinions and there's nothing we can do to stop it. This is an awesome amenity. It's a great, uh, new park that's going to be developed with some incredible amenities for our residents. Um, I'm excited about it and, uh, that's all I'm going to say. Counsel, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, then I'll move us on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item that was not on tonight's agenda? Uh, yes ma'am.
Hello, Sarah Fisher. Um, I just have one request about Red Run Park. Uh, some things that we've read, um, about Red Run Park in the past is that there was going to be a satellite library there and I just wanted to check in on the satellite library and ask, um, will we be able to return books that aren't taken from the satellite library? Or are they only, are we only returning books that are from the satellite library? Um, because in a previous community I lived in, they had one and, um, it would be convenient to be able to drop off all library books there. So I just wanted to throw that out.
Okay, thank you. Do you know Kyle? I mean, I don't typically do this. Are you going to be around for the rest of the meeting?
I can.
Well, why don't you just answer now? Counsel, any problem with that?
Poor guy.
No.
So he can leave.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, great question. Uh, we're excited to have the twenty-four hour, uh, kiosk library that's going to be there. I know working through, uh, everything with the li, um, library director, Tammy Turgeon, the expectation is there will be, uh, materials and collections that will be part of that and it'll also be a fluent, uh, delivery and takeout of materials, uh, throughout, uh, the given day. The library is, uh, preparing through the, uh, operating budget to have the, the staffing and the collection of materials to be able to swap out. So, um, based on my understanding, uh, that would be the case, that you could check out materials, it'll get delivered, uh, to that site, you can take them and then bring it back to that site after, or any other library, uh, location.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, anyone else under communications from citizens? Now, we'll close that portion and go on to reports from city administration, anything tonight, Mr. Vanderpoel?
Uh, Mayor, just for the clarification, that, uh, there is intended to be a dropbox at the satellite library for returns as well. In addition, I might remind, uh, the audience and residents at home that this is kind of a mini, excuse me, satellite city hall as well. You can conduct, uh, business, uh, from the kiosks that will be there. Uh, you can, uh, look up city information, you can, uh, look up anything pertaining to your property, uh, you can, uh, check out library books, uh, so it will have a, a full internet connection and, and you'll be able to actually conduct some business there as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel, Mr. Kachubski.
Uh, no closed session tonight.
All right, counsel, any reports, new business tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Briefly, um, after meeting with the city manager and, uh, talking about, uh, the future of this park in the ITC corridor, I just, without objection, would like to add, um, the continuation of the ITC pathway, South of Fourteen Mile Road, to our strategic planning agenda in January. Uh, on top of that, I'd like to talk about, uh, linkages. Essentially, um, there are little areas in the city where there are two sidewalks that are about four feet apart that are not connected and, um, it's going to require a little bit of money and a little bit of lawyer time to get the easement to connect these sidewalks. There's one of them right at the corner of Seventeen Mile and Dodge Park. And the first court inn or the second court inn has a fence across the public sidewalk, across from a school, that essentially kids have to go a block out of their way to go onto the court in which they live. So if we could prioritize these little gaps to fill and have a broader discussion about bringing the ITC Trail south, because I've knocked ninety-six hundred doors this year so far and one thing that people in the north side say is they love the ITC Trail. It is, it is an amenity like no other. And the thing that the people on the south side say is, "When are we going to have a pathway of our own?" Cause almost every trail we've put in the city has been north of the Clinton River. So most people on the south side don't have a pathway and they would like it. So I know it's going to cost something to the tune of probably two million dollars to bring that ITC Trail south. So I'd like to have a robust discussion at strategic planning about maybe asking legislature or how can we fund it? Because I want to make sure the people on the south side of our city have the same access to amenities. That's part of what Red Run Park is going to fix, access to amenities that the people in north side have. So without objection, I'd like to add a discussion of that to our strategic plan, uh, strategic planning meeting. Mr. Mayor?
Counsel, any objection?
Mayor Taylor?
This is...
I don't have an objection. I just want to clarify, because when you first started out, you said south of fourteen. You wanted the ITC corridor to go to fourteen.
Two fourteen, yes ma'am.
Yes, continue south, two fourteen.
Yeah, I apologize.
That's, okay, that's, I just want to make sure that's what we're doing.
I misspoke.
Okay.
Uh, okay, counsel, hearing no objections. Mr. Vanderpoel, you have some direction there? Uh, all right, Mr. Radke, anything else?
Uh, no, I, I'm, I'm so excited that the meeting before an election, the thing that we're talking about is how to fund playscapes and improve our parks. I mean, we've done so much here in Sterling Heights. We're all going to go before the voters, uh, before the next election, but, uh, I appreciate all my colleagues who I work with here and who have made the city a great place to live. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Radke. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Arco?
Mayor, okay, thank you, Mayor Taylor. Um, first of all, we know that this time of the year, um, the Hindu culture celebrates Diwali and I think that in the future, because it's on all of our calendars, you, an outlook, whatever, that maybe it's something that we do a resolution for them and to recognize it at the beginning of the month, you know, because it depends on the temple, which day they're going to celebrate and the temple here in, um, Sterling Heights is going to be invited us for Saturday. So, um, but if we could do that in the future and it just be something that we do automatically, I think they would appreciate. They are trying to get involved in the community, they've already done fundraising for, um, Parks and Rec for the library. So, um, it's just, it's just a recognition for all the hard work that they do and make us a better community. Okay, then, if you didn't watch Shark Tank after the last meeting when Paula McPherson was here and told us about the young women that had started the company called Fundraiser Blankets, there were three sharks that actually wanted to make a deal, but they made a deal with Barbara Cochran and Lori Greiner. So in return, the two sharks gave them three hundred thousand dollars, uh, for twenty percent of their, um, business. And of the twenty percent, two percent would always be going to a charity. So update, two, um, semi trucks delivered eight thousand blankets to the Pope Francis Center in Detroit. So we're already seeing how this works. It's brought, the show itself brought some recognition to the Velocity Center that's here and Pope Francis is, will be the place where they distribute the blankets to the other, um, different nonprofits that are housing, um, people that are homeless or, um, need help. So I thought it was a really good story, so I wanted to bring that up. Um, and lastly, um, one of our residents went to some kind of presentation where there were young hu, uh, high school kids that had to do, uh, a speech on, on something that they saw and they liked. And she said that the student went and actually used the words of affirmation that we have on all of the pillars on Van Dyke as part of their speech, because they had watched it, you know, as going up and down Van Dyke, but they thought it was something that was positive that they could bring and report on. So I thought, hey, another good story, why not? So nothing further.
I'll tell you what, I, I know you were at the SEMCA, um, ribbon cutting.
Yes.
But you had to leave a little bit early.
Yes.
And I don't know if you were there when, so SEMCA is the Southeast Michigan Acad, Southeast Michigan Construction Academy, uh, which is a trade school that opened up in the old Comcast building on Van Dyke, uh, just south of Sixteen Mile. There was, uh, you know, an empty building there for years since COVID and now it's a trade school where I think something like eight hundred, uh, students will be enrolled at any given time, uh, learning their trades, learning construction trades. So it's an incredible, uh, thing for our community. And somebody who's involved in SEMCA, uh, that went through the academy previously and now works for SEMCA, uh, gave a really nice speech and he kept, got up and he started talking about the, he called them the obelisks on Van Dyke and he read each one, what they said and how meaningful that was and I just, I thought that was pretty cool too.
I know.
So they're, they're catching on and, uh, I think they're great. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel, um, typically in the fall, our, um, leaf pickup stops in November, since we've been blessed with such an extended summer this year. Are we extending that yard waste pickup?
Mr. Vanderpoel?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Schmidt, thank you for the question. I don't have the answer, but I'm really certain that it will be extended. We'll get something out to you very soon, but you're absolutely right, the trees are way behind. I think we're going to have to go a couple of weeks at least into December, but we'll get an update to the council and the community in short order.
Yeah, if we could put that out on our blast, I, you know, all of our social media and stuff, uh, when we do have that answer, I'd appreciate it. Um, other than that, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Or you can just cut, mulch the leaves.
Mulch the leaves, which is the best. We mulch the leaves as well.
It's easier too, I mean, you're out there raking and raking.
Good for the lawn, good for...
Who wants to do that? Just run them over with a lawnmower.
Yeah.
Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Schmied?
Thank you very much. So just very briefly, um, I was, I just want to remind people that we, if anyone's turned in later, that we did have a very wonderful young lady who was getting out and doing things for the community, Natania Fosenko. So I wanted to shout out to her again because that is something that as a senior in high school, she's making such a difference and just really proud of her, but, and we all need to try to make a difference in our world. It's, it's extremely important. And very briefly, just, everyone, this is our last council meeting until the vote. So we ask that you please get out and vote for, use your, exercise your dem, your God, I want to say God-given right, but it certainly is a constitutionally given right and use your voice. Everyone deserves a voice and everyone deserves to be heard and I want to have all the votes that we can possibly have in Sterling Heights come out. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Sarowski, Mrs. Koski.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Through the chair to, uh, Mr. Vanderpoel. Have we been contacted by ITC at all in regard to their tree trimming? I know that they're doing it in the southern part of Michigan. Are they doing it along their lines here through Sterling Heights? And if somebody is contacted and they have a question, uh, who could they call as far as the city is concerned?
Mr. Vanderpoel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Koski, yes, ITC is doing regular tree trimming, clearing in the city along the corridor, as is DTE. Uh, and the reason for that is obvious, especially with DTE, uh, to minimize, um, electricity disruptions and that's happening all over the metropolitan area. If anyone has any questions, they can feel free to call city management and we'll connect them with ITC. We frequently, uh, go out and take a look at concerns that residents may have. In fact, our assistant city manager, Haley Bradley, who's here this evening, uh, has been working on, uh, an issue with a resident on the north end of the corridor. Uh, a couple of residents were concerned about trees that were going to be removed